... offered by Councilwoman Castellino.
After I read the opening.
Whoops.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8, 2016. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Kokoviac?
Present. Now, without further ado, Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, May is Older Americans Month, and to celebrate our older Americans here in West Orange, today we had a salute to seniors, a beautiful luncheon provided, organized by our Health Department. Today was at Mayfair Farms, about over 150 people attended, and it was a lovely luncheon. What we are happy about in the township is just recently, and we spoke about it, the last council meeting, that we were awarded a grant to move forward, to have a survey completed over the summer months, and I'll have our Health Department talk a little bit more about that in detail when we're ready to present. This will enable the township to collect much-needed data on our residents and how they may age in place here in the township, and it will be facilitated by Montclair State College. So, we're excited to roll that out within the next month or two. And for tonight, we are going to celebrate, and on behalf of the Health Department, we have Patty Duffy, our Senior Assistant Coordinator, to come up. If you could please stand beside me as I read the resolution to honor our residents. Older Americans Month 2017. Whereas the Township of West Orange includes older Americans who richly contribute to our community, and whereas we acknowledge what it means to age has changed for the better. Whereas the Township of West Orange is committed to supporting older adults as they take charge of their health, explore new opportunities and activities, and focus on independence. And whereas the Township of West Orange can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by involving older adults in the redefinition of aging in our community, promoting home and commuting-based services that support independent living, encouraging older adults to speak up for themselves and others, and providing opportunities for older adults to share their experiences. Now, therefore, we, the West Orange Township Council, do hereby proclaim May 2017 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take the time during this month to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as influential and vital parts of our community. And would you do the honor of accepting this for our residents in our township and maybe talk about some of the programs that are going on right now? Thank you.
You guys want me to get up as the older American?
Yes.
Thank you so much for this citation. It's a population that really deserves recognition and respect, and they are a very active population in town. I think 7,000 people or more in West Orange are over 65. Even at our event today, what we noticed is a lot of new faces. We're attracting younger seniors, which is wonderful. There was a lot of laughing and dancing, and a great time today. So, it's my honor to work with this population, and I enjoy it very much. Regarding the survey, we're excited about this as a tool to do a few things: evaluate the services already in place, make suggestions about ones they would like to see, or programs they would like to see. They're a vocal group. They don't have a hard time telling us what they like, but, you know, we want to reach out to the whole community, so we're going to do our best to distribute this townwide. It'll be available online, as well as hard copies. We're enlisting volunteers to be trained to get the word out, and I think it's going to be a very useful thing. We're also using it as a vehicle to let them know what is already in place, and if they're aware of it, and if they're using it, and if they're not, you know, how can we make it better? So, overall, it's going to be a great thing. It's going to tell us how to move forward, as well as how we're doing now. So, I think it'll be a wonderful thing. So, thank you again, and I'll let everyone know that they have the citation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Duffy.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Sayers, update on redevelopment, downtown redevelopment, please?
Okay. As I said before, when I was talking to you, they're actually putting the cement up on the far over R. The windows are starting to go in. Like I said, they have started to hook up the, not hook up yet, but they're putting in the pipings for the sewer systems and everything within the building. And as I mentioned before, I haven't been inside in the last couple of weeks. I tried to get inside today, but I just didn't have the time to do that. So, by next meeting, I'm going to go meet with them and get inside and see what the inside looks like. But so far, it's moving all the very well, very well.
Councilman Guarino, would you like to ask your question?
No.
I already gave them the answer. Here it goes, the answer.
Mr. Sayers, but thank you, Council President. I appreciate that. I just, Mr. Sayers, I'd like to say one thing, and we should put it out there. You know, you look on Facebook, and I don't mean to bring up that word, Facebook, but a number of people are saying, they took a picture, and they say, "Oh, it looks like another maple wood disaster waiting to happen," that it's all wooden, and it's not, because it's only 20% of the project, or maybe even less, is wood frame. The rest is Portland concrete that you can't even knock it down. So, I think that needs to get out there, too. People need to understand that the building is, you know, it's not a fire hazard waiting to happen on Main Street. You know, it's not a huge wood construction. It's predominantly, you know, Portland cement, framing, and stuff like that, so...
Probably 95% of the residential units, multiple units in the state are being built with sticks. The maple wood situation is certainly very unfortunate, but that's not an addition of the type of construction. I mean, it's because of the construction it was able to burn, but that's not typical.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Sayers, Mr. Guarino.
Hey, Bill. Councilwoman?
I just want to note, the windows are lovely.
Yeah.
They look really nice.
Yeah, I think they do.
They match them pretty, it's like, you know...
Yeah, they're really putting it together nicely, I think. That's why I want to get on the inside, because I haven't been on the inside in probably about a month, so I want to get... Usually, I meet the guy down there, and he takes me on a tour, and I can see what's going on. I think you went one time.
I did. Everything inside has to go.
Yeah.
The stairs are not compliant, the elevators, everything has to go.
I've just, I haven't gotten a chance to get in there in the last couple of weeks, so by next meeting, hopefully, I'll be able to get in there, see what it looks like.
Me, too.
Council President, if anybody may ask, Mr. Sayers, how is the construction schedule going right now? What is the status? What is...
It's moving pretty well, knock on wood.
The weather's been great.
You know, the weather's been good, and as long as the weather doesn't get bad and things don't happen, they should be on schedule. They're still talking to me about possibly having something open by August, but I'm not so sure that's going to happen. I think maybe September, October, somewhere around there. But they are moving quickly. I'll tell you, they really are. From two weeks ago to where they are today is...
I know, it's a big difference.
It's like an amazing, they're really, people are working there all the time. So, I haven't been by here on the weekends, so I don't know if they're working on the weekends or not, but they're doing a good job so far.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers. Thank you, Council President.
I've asked this before, but the road work, do they anticipate any road closures on Main Street yet?
Not yet. Not yet. The only road closure, like I said, is in front of...
I saw that.
The, you know, our DPW, because that's where they're running the sewer lines into them, and that's been intermittent, maybe one or two days, and then they don't do it. Actually, today it wasn't, I don't believe it was shut down today, I only went by there. So, but that road closure is going to be for probably at least another month, on and off, until they get the sewer systems hooked up and planted into where they need to go to.
Hopefully, if they have to do any work, it'll be over the summer months when school's out, be less complicated.
Yeah. Like I said, most of the sewer hookup work is on, by DPW, not on Main Street.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Sayers.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is council liaison announcements. Anybody like to volunteer to go?
Sure.
Councilwoman McCartney, please.
Great, thank you. I wanted to start with a thank you to everyone that was able to attend the Chamber Community Awards Dinner on Wednesday at the Manor. I got a lot of credit for having a successful event, but it's always nice to be in such a historic, elegant setting, adds to the success of the event. The superintendent presented the honor to Deb Cohen, West Orange High School Special Ed teacher. Joe Matullo, firefighter, presented through an email message on behalf of the Fire Department. They recognized Chief Smiraldo as the Firefighter of the Year. The police chief recognized Pat Matullo as the Police Officer of the Year. And I presented the award to JAG Physical Therapy for all the work they do in town in 15 locations that John Galucci has established in our area. So, thank you to all who were able to attend. We have, so tomorrow, I'll have more to report, colleagues, next meeting, but this is interesting that through our recycling ordinances and tonnage reports with New Jersey Clean Communities, the Executive Director Sandy Huber has selected West Orange as the site to host their 15th Annual New Jersey Clean Communities Event. It's tomorrow. It starts with recognizing students from all across the state. The Wilshire Grant is donating 1,000 sandwiches, that's how many students we're expecting. The Wilshire Grant is donating 1,000 student sandwiches for the event. The zoo will be open, and we're honoring students across the state that have made an impact somehow in the projects or their schoolwork for the environment. The West Orange, I've nominated the West Orange High School's Fight for Green Team for an ambassador program that they, where they go out to different elementary schools to talk about the environment and recycling and the importance of that. So, it's a three-day event. That's at the zoo tomorrow. On Thursday evening, Thursday morning, there's a seminar at McLunes. Everyone is invited to McLunes on Thursday morning for a seminar. Thursday evening, there is a dinner at Pleasant Del Chateau at 6 o'clock, and we have our honorees this year from West Orange. Again, they're from all over the state, from West Orange. We have Ryan Del Gercio, the supervisor of the Sustainable Technology and Engineering Course at the high school because of what he carried on. I've been talking about LED now for two years, but he took that to the next level and created the nightlights with his students. My husband Joe, we talked about at our last meeting, planting, spearheading the Earth Day Event here for the township, planting 500 trees, along with John Linton, our forester, and Heidi Cohen, West Orange resident and landscape architect. And on Friday, the closing program is a breakfast of champions, a farewell, at the Primavera Restaurant. I'm really proud and pleased that they chose West Orange. We have to learn more about this program. This is really the first time I'm hearing about it, so I'll have more to report at our next meeting. And save the date, July 13, the Friends of Edison will have their second annual Glenmont Garage. This will be a summertime tune-up, July 13. Glenmont Garage is Edison's garage in Llewellyn Park. All proceeds from the Friends support and conserve the historical materials at the National Historic Park right here on Main Street. The date, July 13, 5 to 7. You can become a member of the Friends, and tickets are $30, or $35 if you're not a member. But foedison.org for more information.
Thank you, Council.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President. Just like to remind everybody, you know, June 3 is right around the corner. Saturday, June 3, is the annual West Orange Street Fair compiled with the Thomas Edison Day. We hope everybody comes out to have a great time. We'll have food trucks, we'll have craft vendors, we'll have a rope slide, you know, power slide, seven-foot robots walking around. It's going to be a great day. Our antique car show, classic car show, will be done. And during this day, also, it's free admission to the Thomas Edison National Park, so please come if you've never seen it, or you haven't seen it in a while, you should come by and spend a day with us. It'll be a great, great event, and we're looking forward to having a great turnout with great weather. And the other thing is, you know, we're moving along on our Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. We're coming up to our planning sessions with the county. We have to, I have to thank the county on behalf of the board for all the cooperation and all the assistance they've given us, especially with our developing of our complete streets, our line painting, and the demonstrations for what will like to happen on Main Street and Pleasant Valley Way. And also, just to, you know, to thank the county for its cooperation, because you can't get complete streets done without cooperation from all forms of government. So, we want to thank you, and thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Anyone else like to go next? Councilwoman?
Go ahead. Council President, thank you. I just want to make mention two things. June 24, from 5 to 9 p.m., at the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center, June 24, Saturday, from 5 to 9 p.m., we have Latin Night at Ospac. For more information, you can visit the website. It's naia.org, naia.org. It's an annual celebration of the Hispanic Foundation in collaboration with Ospac. We're going to have vendors, there's going to be a band, a Caribbean band, playing all the different tunes, and every year, it's always a good time, and it's a growing event, and I invite the community to come and have a great time. So, again, it's a free event, so that would be June 24, Saturday, from 5 to 9 p.m. Council President, the second item that I want to make mention is that we continue working on the Historic Valley Train Station. What I want to report this month is that we're going to be working on developing a Transit Village application in collaboration with the City of Orange. I think that there's sufficient, there's sufficient initiatives to meet the criteria. I actually have the application in front of us, in front of me, and just looking through. I am very confident that we meet a lot of the scoring criteria that New Jersey, that the state of New Jersey, Palmer Transportation has put forward with respect to the arts, with respect to the ridership, with respect to the commuter population that exists, the construction and redevelopment initiatives that are taking place, and most importantly, the commitment from both municipalities. So, we'll be working on this, on this for the next few months, and seeing that we can be successful. And why? Why are we doing this? Because we're looking for an investment via either grants, it gives us access to grants, technical assistance that exists at the state level, assistance for the arts, assistance for bicycles. Basically, we're trying to develop an area where you can live, you can shop, you can appreciate the arts without having to rely on automobiles, use trains as the model of transportation. So, it's really exciting, and looking forward to moving the initiative forward. Thank you, Council President.
Sounds good. Councilwoman?
Thank you. A big thank you to all who came out to the West Orange Health and Wellness Fair this past Sunday, beautiful Sunday afternoon. The weather was gorgeous, there was a lot of great vendors there. The New Jersey Arc Incubator had sponsored the event. The West Orange Public Relations Commission offered a helping hand, along with many, many businesses from the West Orange Chamber of Commerce were on hand. They came, came for a few hours. Our Health Department was there. We had the Sports Medicine Club from West Orange High School with our athletic trainer there, and they were giving some good demonstrations on stretches and whatnot, Tai Chi, kickboxing, yoga, a lot of great participants, and we appreciate everyone coming out to promote health and wellness here in West Orange. Let's see here. I just took a note for the street fair. I believe there's a volunteer sign-up, and we need sign-ups, so if you could go to the Downtown Alliance website. We also need sign-ups for our Fourth of July week, from July 1 to the 4th, or the Vietnam, the Traveling Wall will be here at West Orange High School. And volunteers are needed to help out with the event, so you could go on the township website, and you could click on to the event and sign up in the sign-up volunteer boxes that are there. So, come out, get involved, and help on some great events. I also want to give a big thank you to the administration and to Mr. Lapore. The mayor kicked off the jitney routes Route 6 via Facebook page on Friday, got a lot of great responses, so we appreciate that. Mr. Lapore, he's in the back, I saw him walk in, and just, you know, just a thank you. I know personally, working with you, you've been on that, working with the jitney bus driver in the mornings, at night, trying to get that route completed, and kudos to you, not an easy task, so we thank you for all your hard work on getting that together for our residents. And Memorial Day Celebration this Monday morning, I believe, Mr. Sayers, is it 10 or 10:30?
10.
10 o'clock. Come out and be supportive as we honor our most celebrated veterans here in the township. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Just to follow up on Councilwoman Castellino's, Councilwoman Castellino's comment about the Vietnam Traveling Wall. If you want to sign up for volunteers, you can go directly to westorange.org/july4th. It's four T H, and it'll throw you right on there. It may be a little bit quicker way to get there. Relay for Life was this past Friday into Saturday, raised more than $36,000.
Nice.
So, thank you to everyone who contributed. You can still contribute if you'd like. You go to relayforlife.org/westorangeNJ, and this is the major fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. Also, coming up on June 11 is the Men Who Cook, which is the fundraising, the major fundraising function for the West Orange African Heritage Organization, where they raise several thousand dollars for college scholarships for West Orange kids. It's June 11, which is a Sunday, at the Parish Center at St. Joseph's Church on Benvenue, near Northfield and Prospect. Basically, you get about 40 or so chefs, and they cook everything from salads to entrees to desserts. And if you're out there and you want to contribute and bring some people, please give a call Tickets are $25 for adults. I used to have tickets, but I've gotten takers for my five, but so if anybody else wants more, just send me an email, give me a call. And just last, I saw the email that the administration has appointed an acting fire chief, Anthony Vecchio, to take office July 1 on an acting basis.
That's correct. Until the test is given, and once the test results come out, there will be a permanent chief, but that probably is not going to be until September, October. So, our chief is retired in July, so we need an acting chief to carry us through. So, Anthony Vecchio will be the acting fire chief as of July 1.
Great choice.
Sounds good. Any other announcements?
I just want to, may I please?
Sure.
Just to Victor, thank you about the Transit Village, and just to let you know that a few months ago, we had a Brownfields grant that we were working on, and a component of it was about Transit Village. And, you know, the buildings were still there, we just weren't there yet, so to hear that you're working with Orange on this, we have moved in a short amount of time. But the redevelopers, when they came before the planning board from Matrix, very well-versed, our town planner, very well-versed, so a lot of people contribute to that grant that we tried for the Brownsfields. So, there's a whole network out there that could help with that. Good. Great.
Thank you.
I think that's it for our conference agenda. We can now start our public meeting. Madam Clerk, remember this time.
Very good. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8, 2016. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Kokoviac?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
We typically start off with public comment. I just wanted to flag this for everybody. We typically, or at least I haven't been allowing any last-minute resolutions to the agenda. We did put one on today. It has to do with a street sweeper that we've been talking about acquiring. Actually, we've been talking about acquiring two of them. We got a last-minute request by the Town Engineer, Mr. Lapore. Mr. Lapore, maybe you could just, it's great to see you in the council chambers again. Perhaps you could just come up and just briefly describe the resolution. There's a lot of people in town who are very interested in getting this. We've had some challenges keeping them on the road in the last few years.
Good evening, council members and council president. I think, as you know, earlier this year, in the Public Works capital budget, we requested, and the mayor approved, and you also approved the purchase of two street sweepers. A few weeks ago, you, on second reading, appropriated the money for our capital projects with the assistance of our purchasing agent, Susan Brennan. We put specifications together for one of them, which is readily available. And as you indicated, I requested, we took bids today, and we only had one bidder. There aren't necessarily a lot of street sweeper manufacturers. This one met the specifications, and I'm just requesting tonight that you authorize entering into a contract for that purchase. Since this is a piece of equipment that is readily available, we're going to have it on the streets in just a couple of weeks, if not sooner.
Right.
So, I thank all of you for entertaining this tonight.
It's a demonstrator model that has like 800 miles on it.
800 miles, most of which is traveling to and from demonstrations, not really sweeping streets. And I expect it's going to have many, many times more of that by the time we're done with it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lapore.
And just wanted to get it on the agenda tonight, so if we approve it, we can get it here even quicker.
Thank you.
That's great.
So, I just wanted to flag that before we start a public comment. Now is the time at the top of the meeting for public comment. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand and be recognized by me, and then come down and speak at the lectern. Please start with your name and address, and spell your name for our minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for public comment? Please raise your hand.
Oh, cool.
Yay, you got this guy, love.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak? Please come on down. Ms. Morelli, if you wanted to speak now, you can come on down, you can be next.
I have everybody else still on.
Okay. Is, excuse me, is there anyone else who wanted to speak? If so, please come down to the front. Thank you. Please go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. My name's Robert Behrens, and you spell my last name B-E-H-R-E-N-S. I'm actually with Education First, and we're a program that brings international students over to the U.S. So, it's an exchange program, and we're looking for host families here in the West Orange community. So, we wanted to get the information out to the council members, as well as the community, just to, you know, promote interest and promote the program a little bit, and give you guys some more information. We do have a website, it's ef.com, so there's additional information on the website. And then you can also contact us... then you can also contact us via telephone, 973-387-5801, and I will also give you guys a copy of the flyer, so you've got all the information available.
Thank you.
So, before you go?
Yes.
I know Councilwoman and I have both had exchange students before, but maybe if you could just briefly explain the program, how it works, and what the responsibilities might be, and maybe the timeframe, it might help with the marketing, please.
Sure. So, this is more of a summer program, so the students are coming over from Europe and Asia. We've got students aged 13 to 18 years old, they're staying for about three to four weeks at a time, but we have obviously numerous groups through the summer. Date ranges go from the end of June all the way to the end of August, so there's a couple of different options for people to have as well. While they're here, they do study English, so the whole point of it is the cultural immersion as well as language immersion, and really getting a taste of what life is like here in the United States.
And so, basically, they're going to class, or they're going on trips during the day, so the responsibilities is mostly to?
Correct.
In the evening and morning.
Yes, so for the responsibilities of the host family, it would be evenings and weekends. We do encourage, you know, do whatever you've got going on, it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, you have to take them to Six Flags every weekend, it's to really show them what, you know, life is like here in the US, so, you know, do what you're doing, we don't expect you to bend over backwards or do anything crazy unless you're going to do that, so, but it's a fun program, and, you know, they're teenagers, they want to go to the mall, they want to do basic stuff, like it's nothing crazy.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sears.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment, though, that Robert, when, this was years ago, we've been, my family has been a host family for a number of years, students from Hong Kong over the summer, but they took a table at the street fair, EF had a table at the street fair, and that's where they got a lot of families.
Yeah, we actually have been doing a number of the street fairs.
Yeah, excellent.
I think we're doing West Orange, actually.
Okay, June 3rd.
Our's is June 3rd, our street.
I'm pretty sure we're doing, yeah, because there's a couple in June, most of them have been April and May, and unfortunately, the weather has not been cooperative for any of them. Sunday was pretty good, but the rest of the weeks have been a little quiet, just with the rain and the cold weather, so we're hoping, I know we've got, I'm pretty sure West Orange on the 3rd, and then there's, there's one more, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but we've got a couple more, and then a bunch of the farmers' markets as well.
Sure.
So, I know we're doing the West Orange farmers' markets all through them.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Pagliisi, did you and Ms. Morelli figure out who was going?
Yeah, we had a.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak besides Ms. Morelli? If you'd raise your hand?
Hi, Anthony Pagliisi, Public Information Director for Essex County, representing County Executive D. Fincenzo. So, earlier tonight, you had a resolution for Older Americans Month at the county, we've also been hosting a variety of events all month, and one that we had last week was our Essex County Legends Ceremony, where we honored four outstanding seniors who have done a lot in their community. Two of them were West Orange residents. One was Ruth Bernstein, who, at 100 years old, continues to volunteer at the Essex County Kosher Nutrition Program at the JCC Margulis Senior Center. And the other West Orange resident was Nancy Truela, who volunteers for a number of organizations. She helps seniors navigate the Medicare system, she works in a community garden, she teaches English, has a second language, and also assists seniors who are applying for our nutrition assistance program. So, that was a great event that we had last week. And then I just want to remind everyone once again that June 3rd at Turtleback Zoo is our 15th Annual Essex County Open House, free admission to the zoo, and just a really good opportunity to see the various programs and departments and divisions that the county has, that works cooperatively with the town to address quality of life issues and all that kind of stuff. And that's 10 to 2 on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pagliisi.
Ms. Morelli? I should have mentioned earlier in the meeting that tonight we have a scheduled public hearing on the 2017 municipal budget, there are copies of the budget down here in front, if anybody'd like to take a look at them quickly, because we'll be coming up a little bit later in the meeting. Ms. Morelli, good evening.
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. First of all, I want to thank you for the citation, sincerely appreciate it, recognition is very much appreciated, and I know that the other seniors in town appreciate it also. We had our first class, I guess you all read about it, the computer training course, where the mentors from the high school worked with the senior citizens on computers. First of all, it was a love fest. Because, I'm telling you, I worked with a lot of these young people on Relay for Life. Actually, I get so emotional about it because of their passion, it really makes me emotional to see the way they work, and they're so really involved. Well, we had like one-on-one, and more than one-on-one with these young people, and the seniors with all their little devices sitting at the desktops, and they got us through all of that, they even sat and did the chair yoga with us. Now, that's old folks stuff. Now, getting back to Older Americans Month, I'm willing to bet I'm the oldest American here tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, I sure am. Actually, again, getting back to this class, yesterday was, it was Monday, wasn't it Monday? It was a dreary day, it rained, and most of these seniors would have been sitting home in front of a television, totally isolated. It was great, I can't describe it, and they can't wait to come back, and the students were just wonderful, and I attribute the students to the parenting they get, teachers they have, and Mr. Moore, the principal, an outstanding gentleman, really. Transportation to the doctors, I need to know what the policy is. If somebody calls and has to go to a doctor, and they're all booked, and they can't take that person to the doctor, what happens? They call early enough in time for the window, and they're all booked, what do we do? So, I need an answer to that question. I did get a hard copy of the transport, but I really would encourage you, the administration, to go back to maybe the Federation, the Jewish Federation, hopefully get money and come out with an updated version. There's a, for seniors, there's something new. Some old grandmother was upset with Uber because she doesn't have a smartphone and can't arrange transportation, so two young men started this company, it's called GoGo Grandparents. Did you hear about it?
You told me, yeah.
Did I tell you? It's the best way to call for a ride without a smartphone, up to 35% cheaper than a cab, 24-hour operator support, get a ride within 15 minutes, go up to 100 miles in any direction, here's the number. I called the company and got this postcard, oh, actually, they sent me 100, so I'm getting more, maybe Karen, because I'm passing them out to all the seniors.
That's cute.
Okay, so all we want to know is, what do we do about, you know, when you go through your roundtable or whatever, what do we do, what is the policy, when somebody has to go to a doctor, they call in enough time to set up an appointment, but the, there's no transportation available. Thank you.
Ms. Morelli, before you go, thank you very much. You mentioned GoGo Grandparents, can you put out the phone number that people could call?
It's on the card.
Right, but I'm just thinking, there's probably several hundred, if not thousands of people.
Okay, do you want to read it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Karen can maybe make some copies or something, that I will send for more.
Sure.
I'll get a couple hundred more. Thank you.
The number is 1-855-855-4646872, 4646872, and it is a prompt process. One, to get picked up at home, two, to get picked up from where they dropped you off, and zero, to speak to an operator.
That's 855-464-8672?
You got it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Please raise your hand.
This is a website, too.
Yeah, read the, read the.
Just for Councilman Cirilla, is there, also to visit the website is GoGoGrandparent.com, Thank you, Rosary.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I will close public comment and ask any of my colleagues or the administration if they wish to comment. Specifically, Mr. Sears, at some point, we'd like to get your response to some of her, Ms. Morelli's questions, but is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
Yeah, I can go.
Councilwoman, please.
Rosary, thank you for bringing up those issues again at the party today, and it is something that we should address, the ambulatory care center, and it was brought up on previous meetings, Summit Medical are out of town, and it seems, Mr. Sears, the trend is a lot more and more of our residents, doctors are moving to these sites which are out of town, so, you know, I guess we'll just have to figure out.
We do go to the Morelli, we do take people out of town, to Livingston.
To Livingston, yeah, to that one, and.
I know we go to the one in Livingston.
But what, so, if we could just figure out what we need to do, if it is overbooked, I know we're going to get another with the jitney, so let me ask you this question, with the new jitney route we just approved, is that going to provide for extra times?
It would have another bus.
For seeing?
We don't have a driver.
We don't have the driver?
If you have a driver, the company that we hire to drive the jitneys will man that bus, so if we wanted to man another bus, we would have to hire another full-time driver.
Okay, for that bus, for the new bus, so that, so the jitney company will be in the morning and at night for the service, but as far as utilizing it for senior services?
We would, the town, would they have to hire another full-time driver to do that?
And, okay, any conversations with the school board in regards to getting, using some of their drivers as part-time for us?
We had that conversation a while ago, and it really didn't go anywhere, you know, so, I mean, I can.
If you could reach out to Mr. Rutske and see if he has.
Yeah, I can speak to him.
Okay.
I can speak to him about it.
Because I think we're just, I know we have it, but I did talk to somebody today that, you know, it was booked up, and so they'll make a later appointment, but the question, point being is, you know, if we're able to get more time in, so we don't have everybody booked up. But she did say it was very accommodating, working with her.
Just to follow up on that question, we accommodate whoever we can accommodate.
I know.
If we're booked up that day, then we can, if you call us at 8:00 in the morning and say, "I got a doctor's appointment at 9:30," and we're booked up that day, unfortunately, that's a problem.
Yeah.
We always tell everybody to give us at least three days in advance, we try to get three days in advance so that we can schedule the appointments. But there are times when people call up same day and ask for a ride to a doctor or someplace else, and unfortunately, we're booked up, and we can't do that. There are other days when people do that, and we can do that, because we're not booked up, but it just depends on the scheduling, that's really what it comes down to.
Yeah, I think it's just going to get busier because of these circumstances with their doctors, so.
Yeah, we have made accommodations for the one in Livingston, that I know, but not, the only other place we do go to is for dialysis patients, we take them out to South Orange Avenue, across the street from Livingston.
That's the ambulatory care.
Yeah.
The ambulatory care.
That's the other place.
Right. Now, what she's talking about, Summit Medical.
Yeah, that move, yeah, that.
Oh, but that's right on Northfield, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a different.
Yeah, there's some locations now, because some of the doctors, because now that they joined Barnard, when the hospital merged, they, you know, they joined Barnard Business Health, and they have to move to a different location.
Right, but Summit Medical is in Livingston, right on Northfield, so it's not.
There's two of them, though.
Okay.
It's not one, there's two, there's one up at the top of Northfield Avenue, and there's one just above St. Barnard's.
And going back to, you know, we'll have Mrs. Duffy back when we have, just so my colleagues know, when we have the survey ready to distribute to the community, they're meeting with our professionals, our town employees, and our personnel staff, and, you know, going through the various questions that we want to ask, and to get good information. It's an extensive survey, so there'll be a lot of questions, you don't want to make it too long, where folks may deter from filling it out, but it has to be long enough where you get great accurate information, so, all our department heads are, will be, you're looking at the document and giving their input, so, and with, under the advisement of Montclair State, so there have been very, 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 very resourceful, the research center there, so we look forward to getting some good information back that we could, you know, look into our programming. And, let's see, June 3rd, Anthony, thank you for bringing that date up again, because I forgot to mention our, we also have a fishing derby here in West Orange that morning that the Recreation Department sponsors at OSPAC, so that will be 9:00 in the morning, if you have your little one, it's always a great event, fishing derby there. And Anthony, I just want to thank you too, on behalf of my husband, who utilizes Wequay Golf Course. Unfortunately, though, he does have a complaint for you, because you did such a great job in renovating it, you can't get a DT time at 7:00 in the morning now on a Sunday, so.
That was the idea.
The beautiful job with all the parks, and we thank all that the county does in working with us. And, Mr. Behrens, thank you for coming down, I assume you've reached out, or if you shouldn't, reach out to the school board in regards to the programming, I think this is great, it's always a great experience to talk to the students and hear their experiences when they, when they travel abroad. Thank you, Council President.
If I could cite privilege and just follow up with the survey, because it sounds like you're pretty involved with it.
Yes.
You were talking about all the people who are going to have input into this, is there any provision for actual residents to provide input? I'm thinking of people like Ms. Morelli, who is, you know, knows probably more seniors in the town than anyone, and is very knowledgeable about it, is she, or is, are there other residents that are being solicited for their input on this?
They will be involved in, within the process, but not just yet. Right now, the department heads are looking at it with, under the advisement of Montclair State, they're guiding this process, so Montclair State will be guiding this process for us.
And at what point will they be brought in? Will they be brought in to actually help with the survey questions?
I will let you know at the next meeting, we have a meeting next week, and I'll have more information for you.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
We're not, we're not going to rush this, we're going to do it right, so it's not going to be rushed, that's why, you know, we're just letting folks know, because over the summer, we are going to need the community's help in this, in dispersing the information, getting it out there, getting folks, because the good thing about the survey is we're not, we're not limited to how many participants can participate in the survey, so they're not limiting us to a number, per se, so we, it could be 1,000 residents if we could, you know, work really hard and get the information out there, and of course, the more information we come back, the better the comprehensive study that they'll do with that information. But I will be forthcoming once I have that for you, but great question, I'll let you know.
Did anybody else have any questions about the survey or about the transportation? I just wanted to follow up on this, because this is something that comes up, just seems like every meeting, so what you're saying is that the town's policy is if you have, you will do everything you can to provide transportation for dialysis patients?
For any patient. We take, no, we take calls for any patient. We try, in the literature that we put out, we ask you to give us three days in advance, because we schedule those, that transportation. If you call us on a specific day and say, "I have an appointment today," nine out of 10 times, we're able to do that, we do as much as we can to fit you in there. There may be a time where we're really booked up, and we may not be able to do that, but we do work diligently on trying to get that done on a daily basis.
And this is anywhere in West Orange?
Anywhere in West Orange, and then we go to the Dialysis Center in South Orange Avenue, and we go to the Summit Group in Livingston.
Okay, both buildings?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
We weren't doing the outer building, but we have been doing that later.
Okay.
And that, again, that depends on whether, what our scheduling is, you know, so if you call us today and you say, "I have to be at the one up on, you know, the top of South Livingston Avenue, and it doesn't fit in the schedule," it's probably not going to happen, but if you call us in advance, there's things that we work out.
And Ms. Morelli also asked about, or suggested, to maybe get an update to sort of the document or the brochure that you use?
We have just reprinted the document, the document's been being distributed all over the place, as far as I know, so I don't know what that's about.
And it has update.
Because I know Mrs. Duffy's distributing it at her affairs, it's been put in the buildings, it's out on the counter, out in front of the hallway, it's all over the place, and like I said, there's also stuff on our website that, actually, the whole document is on the website.
Yes.
Yeah, that I saw.
Yeah, but it's being distributed, I know that.
And it's current?
Yes.
Okay.
June 3rd.
Please, Ms. Morelli.
I'm not going to debate this anymore.
Okay. No, I just-
I really am not, because I'm tired of basically listening to it. It's not, what we did was took the document, updated the document, and put it out.
Okay. Great, that's clear. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I just want to add to the comment.
Councilwoman.
Just so folks realize, because we are, you know, going further, that, you know, that makes it harder to do the bookings, because, you know, the timeframe to come back to town, so that's why my wheels are turning, if we could see, we could get another driver.
Further away you go, the less people you're gonna serve.
Yeah.
Trust me, that's the way it works.
I know, I realize that, so I guess our best bet is see how we could get affordable, additional affordable drivers.
And again, like I said, there's other documents that are available, like the document from the center up on Northfield Avenue, where there's other-
The county could take you there.
There's other ways to get out of town, if you want to utilize those services. Some people utilize them, some people don't utilize them.
Okay.
Who'd like to, anyone else like to respond? Councilwoman?
About this, I just wanted to-
Well, just in general, I thought we sort of drained that.
Yeah.
No, we drained it.
Okay.
I wanted to say thank you again to Robert Behrens for coming out about education first. I, we, I, like I said, I've been a host family, and the students were always from Hong Kong, that were the students we have, and the first group of, there were four girls that we had, were in high school at the time, have all graduated from college, still friends with them on Facebook. It was just an excellent experience that I had, and really, the transportation is already arranged, as the host family, you need to get the student to the transportation, and to me, it was conveniently located at Essex Green, but I know it's all over the town, and it takes them to Drew University, where they do have courses all day, and then pick up again in the evening. It was interesting, I did want to say, of the students we have, when you said, "Don't go anyplace special," I did want to take them to the shore, and they, coming from Hong Kong, didn't want anything to do with the ocean, didn't, and they were surprised, and when we got there, they said, "We can go in this water, like, you could swim here," and, so, it was a great experience, so, so thank you for that. And just thank you for the mentor program. I know that this started, you know, twenty years ago, I know my husband helped to volunteer wire the studio up there for Karen Tarnoff, single-handedly instructed the seniors at that time, and the table that I sat at, at the senior luncheon this afternoon, seniors were so pleased, because they had so many questions, they were really thrilled about the program, they had so many questions, but with the students participating, all of those questions could be answered. It's just a different model, so I'm glad to hear that that's, that's going well.
Anyone else? Councilman? Sterling?
No.
Okay.
And Zoo V's, oh, sorry. Aunt, you forgot to mention Zoo V's on Wednesday night, coming up. Zoo V's on the roof of the parking deck at the zoo to watch movies, I think there's nine scheduled, family-friendly movies at the zoo.
I'm gonna shut you off.
At desk. No, it's canceled in the way.
Right.
And I want to second Councilwoman's comments about EF. It's a really good program, and you really get to know the kids, it's not just a week, but it's usually three or four weeks, and the cultural exchange is not just immersion in English, you also get the advantage, or the benefits of getting to know people from other cultures as well, so it benefits you in a cultural exchange. And just want to say thank you to Ms. Morelli and Ms. Scarpa, and everybody else who helped put together the senior training over at the high school, that's a wonderful thing to do, so I just want to say thank you. Madam Plurk, you want to move to the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, May 9th, 2017.
So moved.
Report of township officers, municipal court monthly report for April 2017. Consent?
Consent.
Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being polled this evening? I know that we do need to poll Resolution 121-17, which is the resolution to amend the 2017 municipal budget, number one, and then 122-17, resolution to adopt the 2017 municipal budget.
Council President, thank-
Councilman.
Thank you, thank you, Council President, my colleagues. I just, this is not a polling, this is just a conversation on Resolution K. 117-17, the traffic light at Alyssa Drive and Pleasant Valley Way. I just want to say I'm very pleased, and I want to thank Mr. Lepore for all his diligence, particularly with the pedestrian safety advisory, and to Mr. Puglisi, and to the county, and the county engineer. This is something I brought about in my first year, when I was first elected, and I am very, very happy, as I know my colleagues are, and I know the students and the residents, to actually officially move this process of having a traffic light up at Alyssa Drive for the safety of not only our students, but the residents and the pedestrians up there. I'm very excited, and I can't thank the cooperation that we've received in the working with the county and the county engineering department, and Mr. Lepore, for all his due diligence on working on pulling this all together, so thank you, Council President.
And just to follow up on that, we have Mr. Lepore here. Mr. Lepore, perhaps you could come up and do an instant replay, just to describe a little bit about the proposed light at Alyssa Drive. For those of you who don't have the advantage of seeing the resolution, the estimated cost is about $350,000, three five zero zero zero, to control the traffic there, and the county has agreed to pay a third, and the Board of Education has made a verbal commitment. I don't want to spoil the surprise, but while you were walking up, I just thought I'd throw in a few details.
Well, that's most of probably what I had to say, but we had the firm of Hamel Associates, Harold Maltz is a licensed engineer, he's a traffic engineer, happens to live in this neighborhood. He conducted a study for a warrant analysis for a traffic signal at the intersection of Pleasant Valley Way with Alyssa Drive and Lakeview Drive, because they're almost opposite each other, there's a slight offset, but you would need to signalize both Alyssa Drive and Lakeview Drive. He determined the warrant was met, presented it to the county, the county concurred with his findings and recommendations. They have actually started to move forward on the design process, they've had a survey crew out there already. As you indicated, the county has agreed to pay for a third, they're asking the town to pay for two-thirds, and as you indicated, half of ours, or one-third of the total cost, we're seeking that funding from the Board of Education, and this agreement is actually contingent upon another agreement being brought before you, as well as the board agreeing to their contribution.
Oh, okay.
Can I make a-
Yes, please, Councilwoman.
As the liaison to the school board, I've been in conversation with Ms. Lab, who met with preholder, Mr. Luciano, so they're all, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna go through the appropriate stages, they had passed the resolution last month in regards to support for the light, however, they need to do the financial piece for it, and, you know, so I don't want to hold them to a promise, but I have no worries that they won't come, be forthcoming with that additional resolution for the funding of it, so they'll need to work on that. And just, Mr. Lepore, just to, you know, ditto what Councilman Guarino said, you know, kudos to you. You've really been, you've really been working hard, you established a really great rapport and a great relationship with our county engineer as well, and because of that relationship, we're able to get these tough projects done, so, again, great job, you've been a very busy, busy director this past six months, so, nice job.
Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Lepore, not to embarrass you and everything else, but, you know, again, kudos and thank you for the, I'm sorry, for the cooperation and all the due diligence you went, move in this project, and all our safety projects forward. And if I could ask you real quickly, if you could just give a quick synopsis of how this light will function?
Well, first of all, most traffic signals today, I think residents say, gee, are there cameras on traffic signals, because there's a cylindrical tube, it's got a clear lens in front of it, those aren't red light cameras, those are just video cameras that are detecting the traffic at the signal, and depending on the time of day, that may trigger when a light changes, when it detects the presence of traffic on a side street. So, most of the time, this light's gonna be green, it's gonna be green for Pleasant Valley Way, there's some very peak periods, particularly in the afternoon, when it'll need to move traffic off of Alyssa Drive, but throughout the day, when there's a demand and it detects a demand, it'll change the signal green for Alyssa Drive and/or Lakeview Drive.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Lepore.
Mr. Lepore, while we have you up here, are you familiar with Resolution 118-17? It's the additional testing of the property down in the central corridor redevelopment?
I'm a little bit familiar with it, I know that they want to, I think, further test the concrete in the building to better define where the, quote, hotspots are in any of that contamination, so that, one, we're not treating it all as contaminated and disposing it at a very expensive rate, but trying to just zero in on what the most hazardous portion or the most contaminated is, and then properly disposing that, and then reusing the rest on the site. Be much less expensive disposal of the contaminated concrete.
And that's about $12,100, $12,100, is that?
For this work, I believe that was the proposal from Matrix, yes.
And then just one follow-up question on the street sweeper, because we didn't talk about cost, maybe you could just tell us a little bit about?
I can't remember the exact numbers, but I know there's a trade involved, I think it was about $268,000, less, an $18,000 trade on our street sweeper.
Right, so the final cost, $240,000 and a little bit more?
Right, and, again, I think in our budget, we had $500,000 for front sweepers.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Lepore, one last question, about the street sweepers, have they made the adjustments in the engineering, because, you know, I noticed the basic thing, how the street sweepers get knocked out of whack is from the speed bumps, so as they go over the speed bumps, and, you know, has, was that taken into consideration and aspect?
These are, you know, current design, but, you know, there's only so much that they're gonna be able to flex. If it's, you cited speed tables or speed humps, there's also deep catch basins that they have to navigate through, so they do an excellent job of sweeping, but they don't necessarily handle the most imperfect conditions like a very deep catch basin, but slowly, as we improve our streets, a lot of those catch basins are being eliminated. I don't want to say that we're eliminating in total the catch basin, but we're changing the iron heads that are on them, so that they're a bit more consistent with the grade in the road and don't provide a dip.
And the new sweeper, is the warranty period or a service contract period with this machine?
We did take prices on a service contract, but we're still looking at that pricing, so this may, you may see this before you at a later meeting, because we still need to go over that with the company.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lepore. Thank you, Council President.
And just for context, we've had a lot of problems keeping the two street sweepers that we have on the road.
Well, again, I forget, Anne DeSantis put the resolution, I think the current, I don't know whether she indicated, the current sweeper's 2003, it's 14 years old, it's passed its life, there's a lot of street miles in this town, hills in this town, so, you know, they, you know, they wear, and they're, you know, sophisticated, a lot of mechanical equipment in there.
Yes. Councilman Sterling, did you-
Yeah, I just to follow up on the discussion from last week, Council President, with respect to the jitney shuttle, I want to commend the administration, first of all, for coming up with a route that I think meets the demands of the neighborhood, both in Pleasantville, but also Mississippi Avenue corridor. It's overly impressive, and I just want to thank you, Mr. Lepore, I know you wrote, you wrote tested the route, and can you just brief us real quick on what the route looks like at this point, including the park and ride option, which I think is a great idea, I know there's a resolution before us.
Okay, so, this route, right now, has just four stops, it's a bit different than our other five routes. We're running mostly along main travel corridors, so it would start at, along the Pleasant Valley Way corridor, at the intersection of Pleasant Valley Way and Hooper Avenue. It would continue north along Pleasant Valley Way to the Wilshire Grand, where we're working on a similar agreement to have a park and ride facility there. Past the Grand, it'll go to Woodland Avenue, which is the next traffic light, make a right onto Woodland Avenue, stop at Benet Shalom, which is a resolution that's before you tonight to have a park and ride located there. Then, from there, it'll continue on Woodland Avenue to Forest Avenue, which is by the Redwood School, out Forest Avenue to Eagle Rock Avenue, up Eagle Rock Avenue, cross Prospect, and then down to Mississippi Avenue and Harrison Avenue, where it will probably, I think, loop around Our Lady of Lord, so it's actually on Mississippi Avenue. From there, depending on the time of day in the morning, it'll either go to the Orange or Brick Church station in the morning, we're running four routes or four runs in the morning, I shouldn't say routes, four runs in the morning. The first one will go to Orange, the second and third will go to Brick Church, and the fourth will go to Orange. At night, we'll have, and all this starts approximately 6:30 or a little bit before 6:30 till about 8:40 in the morning. At night, we will have six runs, starting a little after 5:00 and going to almost 8:00, comparable to what we are providing on our other five routes. That route will be run almost the same way. The first two runs will be out of Orange, the third run will be out of Brick Church, and the fourth, fifth, and sixth will be out of Orange train station. It'll leave both train stations, head up Route 280 to Pleasant Valley Way, and then run the same route as it does in the morning.
Terrific. Thank you very much, and just one more follow-up question, Council President.
Certainly.
How long is a route taking?
I, there's a schedule online, I don't have it in front of me. I think it's about 25 minutes from start to the train station, and then it's probably about another 10 minutes back to the beginning, so, depending on the time of day, it could be 35 to 40 minutes to go from the beginning point to the station and back to the beginning point.
And lastly, in Midtown Direct, is that East Orange and at?
Brick Church.
Well, this would be Brick Church and East Orange.
Brick Church and Orange, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Usually a bit better service from Brick Church, although they do have very comparable service at night, unlike when we started the program 18 years ago, there are more trains that stop in Orange than there used to be, so by utilizing both, we're, I think, able to keep better to the schedule of the trains. Unfortunately, as Jerry Guarino may know, New Jersey Transit made an announcement today, that come this summer, all the Midtown Direct service on the Morrison-Essays lines is canceled, and they will be running those trains to Hoboken, in and out of Hoboken.
So during the summer, no matter what train you get, you're going to Hoboken.
But you could also get from Hoboken the path as well, because my kids take the, they've on occasion taken the Hoboken train to hop on the path and then went downtown.
And we'll see if, and they say they're gonna do this for six weeks, we'll see if six weeks is six weeks.
Are they fixing their line?
They're gonna do a lot of, I guess, track work at Penn Station.
Right.
So you'll be-
Okay. Mr. Lepore, have you already touched base with the city of East Orange, and, but we're using Brick Church, you know, with a pickup area and all that, or?
I haven't yet, I'm not as concerned in the morning, because it's pretty much a stop and discharge, night's a little different, it is one train. This, I think the way this is set up, because of, there's approximately a half hour between the trains and the afternoon, and it takes about 35 minutes, you know, we start running a little bit behind the schedule of the train, and we just can't do much about it, so I think in most cases, at Brick Church and even a little bit later in Orange, when we pull into that station, the passengers are, as long as the trains are on time, are gonna be there waiting for it.
No, because, you know, Orange is already set up, they already have the drop-off zones already built in, but just with Brick Church, it's kind of, they have a huge parking-
A little different, yeah.
Okay. And paths will be free during those six to eight weeks?
And not only is the path free, but there's a significant reduction in the commutation fare.
Right.
Councilman?
Just one more follow-up question. I think it's important for the town to make that announcement, as it- I think it's important for the town to make that announcement as it releases to New Jersey Transit and the Midtown Direct being rerouted for the summer. Maybe our public information office can put something on the website. A lot of changes going on at New Jersey Transit, and hopefully, they're listening to the writers, they're listening to our initiatives, as opposed to turning a blind eye, and we'll continue pushing. But yes, please, if we can do that. Now, Mr. Sayers, are we still on point with respect to the starting time, when the shuttle's going to go into effect? We're still looking at late summer?
That's when we get the buses, waiting for buses.
Late summer, still?
That's our problem right now. And right now, we're looking at possibly August. We're backed up, so.
Late summer, okay. Thank you very much for the time.
One more, my last thing. I'm sorry. Mr. Lepore, again, thank you too for the shuttle, and it's really working. Are you looking, and I have a lot from the residents, when I take the shuttle myself and when the residents corral me and everything, it's, what I have to ask is, are you going to tweak the Gregory section shuttle? Because, you know, one of the buses leaves, you know, South Orange and it's packed, and one leaves and it's basically, you know, empty. Are you looking to, you know, get on there and tweak it a little bit, maybe?
I'll look at that. We can tweak some of them, but I think, as you know, three or four of the five buses run through the Gregory section in Lower Valley. But they don't run it like the Route 1 and 2. So we can tweak it to a certain point. We have done some tweaking, where we have Route 4 making some stops along Route 2, where it doesn't require them to deviate or go on a path that is going to be disruptive for those other routes.
Okay, because that's been a big, you know, the residents have been saying about that, and they love it, but, you know, some of them are being, they can't get on because they can only have so many standing, so...
Well, the new buses will have 33 seats, and two of those, one will go on Route 1 and one will go on Route 2. And we'll be able to stand, I think, up to another seven, so we can carry 40 jitney riders on that.
Well, that's good enough. Thank you, and I will tell the residents that. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman, please don't go, Mr. Lepore.
Yes.
You're in big demand. You haven't been at a council meeting in a while, and we're making you pay.
On Route 6, the, you have a larger bus there also, correct?
Probably going to definitely put the larger bus there. Not sure, but most likely it'll start there.
And how will they sign up? Do they need a parking pass to park in our park and rides?
We haven't completely worked out that detail, but I think that what we would do is, if they're going to park at either park and ride, then they're going to have to have a placard or a permit on their car that indicates that they're parking there and they're shuttle users.
And what about Quigley's lot? Do we have spots dedicated there?
I'm not sure how we're going to do that, because that is a metered lot and a permit parking lot, so...
But isn't that our lot?
It's our lot. I think we'll have to look at how we allow people to park there. Again, I don't necessarily expect everybody to drive. Some people may be dropped off.
Yeah.
Some people may park, some people may walk to those locations.
Okay. But will, I guess, there'll be sign-ups for this? We could get the communication piece out?
Yeah, and like I said, I think we haven't quite looked at the Quigley lot, but we can set aside stalls for these runners.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Mr. Lepore, just a quick question, my part. On Resolution 107-17, it's the lease agreement with Bene Shalom. It's basically, we're not paying rent to rent 25 spaces there, but we're actually agreeing to provide snow...
Snow plowing and salting services.
Right. And that's about $6,000?
I'm going to say probably, on a bad winter, it'll be about $6,000, plus or minus. We've had about 15, 16 bad storms, or storms is usually our worst type of winter. On the other hand, last year, we had a winter with very few storms, but one blizzard. When I looked at some of the costs that Bene Shalom paid in 2016, they paid about $8,000. So I think $6,000 is a reasonable number. We have a mild winter, it'll be less. We have more severe winters or a lot of storms that drop a lot of snow, it'll be a bit higher.
So the budget originally for this, this year, for this additional route was $50,000. Does that take into account the $6,000?
I think, I doubt that we will spend any money, or not very likely to spend money on snow removal in 2017.
Okay. Just one more quick question. Is there a plan that, what I heard you say is more than I've been able to pull up in the last few weeks, but is there an actual written plan that people can go to and read and understand? And then how, if they had any input, how would they provide that to the?
Written plan for the routing?
For the sixth route? Yes, the one we've been talking about.
Well, I think what we, what I did is, and again, lots my familiarity with the town, also working with Mayor Parisi and Jack Sayers, because of some of the distances involved, you know, we're getting further and further away from the train stations, and it gets harder and harder to keep that bus going around a loop and being timely and providing a reasonable level of service. So what we decided to do here was just to try to focus on a few key locations, and key locations where anybody in the Pleasantdale or Redwood section, or for that matter, anywhere in town, could drive to. We only have one convenient place now where they can drive to. That's the parking lot number four on Valley Road, right here off of Northfield Avenue. This will provide other convenient locations for many residents in the town to drive to. And that's what we initially decided to do, is to concentrate on this. Obviously, this bus follows a route. The route runs along major streets. If there's some sort of need at a later date to provide some intermediate stops, they, you know, could be incorporated, but it's not like our current routes, where we're a little bit more going through neighborhood streets. And that was a luxury we had because of the proximity to the train station.
So if people had comments about the new jitney route, should they contact you, or...
Yeah, they can contact me. What I can do is work through the mayor's office and through Sue Anderson. Right now, it's just a draft schedule. If people want to make comments, I'll have them put something on the website for that.
Oh, that would be great. I just think it would be informative to a lot of people in that area, so they could start thinking about what they might be doing with this going forward. Just one more question, I'm sorry. You mentioned that there's some parking in Valley at Northfield?
Currently, if somebody wants to take the jitney, they can park in our Valley Road parking lot, right over here by Main, Northfield, and Valley Road.
Okay. Because there's a lot of parking, there's a lot of parking going on around at Ridgeway and Northfield near the fire station, so I wasn't sure what that was.
I'm not sure if that has to do with the jitney or some of the doctors' offices that are there.
Okay.
Okay. Unless you know something I don't.
No, no, the cars seem to be there most of the day, so. So thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything else to ask to Mr. Lepore?
No, he's sorry he gave me his cell number, because I text him all the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Is there any other questions or comments, or pulling any other resolutions? Councilwoman?
A few comments. One on Resolution 109-17. Kudos to the Recreation Department for applying for the Royd Grant, $10,000 to carry on exclusive buddy project through the Township's Recreation Department to teach individuals with disabilities to swim. The buddy program that the Recreation Department has been running for years has really been a necessity and just a beautiful program for our youth with disabilities, and it partners up other students and other young adults in the community with these younger students, and just helping them, assisting them, and it's a great program. The kids have to go and be trained to be able to participate in the program. It has to be about 10 years now they've been running this, so it's nice to see this added addition to this really wonderful, beautiful program for youth in our township. The next comment I had was for 115-17, for, I can't say enough about Millennium Strategies. Denise has been wonderful working with us. Ed Farmer, they have done, they've been very productive this year with the grants that they have written, provided, been awarded to the township, and I just wanted to make that comment. I just want to let the administration know, I've enjoyed their services. They're very, you know, they just make themselves available to us, and any question or idea, they think out of the box, and I think that's what's needed in order to get a lot of these projects funded and have great opportunities for many different categories here in the township. And I think that's it. I had a question from Mr. Gross, and I apologize if he did not get back to my email this afternoon. I was in work on 108-17, the agreement for payment and low taxes. I'm not sure if you emailed me back. I was just wondering what we're collecting on that property right now.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
108-17.
That's a renewal of a pilot agreement, a pre-existing pilot agreement with basically the same terms and conditions.
Yeah, how much are we collecting on the, so is that the revenue, the $60,000?
$64,000 and change? $64,000 and change?
The $60,407, okay. So that is the number. Okay. Thank you. That's all, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cerilla, did you have?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to recuse myself from 115-17.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. And I would just like to say on 115-17, this is the contract for grant writing for Millennium Strategies. It went out for proposals, and the price came in, they were actually the only, I think, the only compliant bid, but the price is going up 29% this year, so it's going up another $8,000. And not a whole lot we can do about it. That's the only people that responded, but it's a big increase, as far as I'm concerned. But, you know, what can you do? They're the only ones that bid.
Mr. Sayers, I assume they based that on the amount of hours that they also, you know, provide the township, which I know is pretty countless, so...
We're very happy with what they're doing, and I think, I don't have it in front of you, but do you care if you distribute the...
Annual report?
Yeah. Everybody get that?
Yeah.
I mean, we still have almost $1.6 million outstanding grants that have already been applied for.
Yeah.
And they've done much better than what they were paid, so we felt that it was a good, it was a good bid.
So it looks like the only, that we're not pulling anything besides the two budget-related ones, 121, 122? Nobody has any other questions or polls?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Okay, so we are now at the point where we're going to have some discussion of the 2017 municipal budget. It, there's some amendments that Mr. Gross is going to read off, and then we will have a public hearing, and then a discussion. Mr. Gross?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we have an amendment, which is a minor amendment to the introduced budget, and as archaic as it sounds, the requirement is to actually read the amendment into the record. So I'm going to go as quickly as I can and as accurate as I can, and read this into the record. Should take about five minutes, maybe less. Okay. Revenues, surplus, total surplus anticipated from $3,012,278.52 to $3,022,376.76. Total surplus anticipated from $3,012,278.52 to $3,022,376.78. I'm sorry, 78. Miscellaneous revenues, Section F, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior consent of the Director of Local Government Services. Public and private revenues offset with appropriations. Partners from Health from $0 to $10,000. New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act from $221,000 to $0. Recycling tonnage grant appropriated reserves $60,4318 to $48,705. Drunk driving enforcement fund from $0 to $18,667.28. Clean Communities Program appropriated revenue $78,776.36 to $90,053.54. Clicker ticket from $0 to $5,500. Municipal Alliance on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse from $59,800 to $59,202. You drive, you text, you pay from $0 to $5,500. Body armor replacement fund from $13,965.73 to $8,279.27. Body armor replacement fund appropriated reserves $8,852.64 to $0. Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant appropriated reserves $9,934.56 to $0. Safer Grant appropriation reserve $10,414.99 to $0. Hazardous Discharge Grant appropriation reserve from $0 to $77,238. Nacho Grant from $8,700 to $14,50. Body worn cameras from $30,000 to $0. Anjac Grant from $500 to $0. Anjac appropriated reserve from $1,000 to $0. Bulletproof Vest Program Grant from $7,303.56 to $4,400. CTEC Grant appropriated reserves from $42,549.53 to $0. Total Section F, special items of general revenue associated with prior written consent of the Director of Local Government Services. Public and private revenues from $587,657.14 to $378,685.09. Summary of revenues, surplus anticipated, Sheet 4, Number 1, from $3,012,278.52 to Total Section F, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of the Director of Local Government Services. Public and private revenues offset the appropriations from $587,657.14 to $378,685.09. Total miscellaneous revenues from $19,312,551.79 to $19,103,579.74. Subtotal general revenues, Items Number 1, 2, 3, and 4, from $24,905,715.07 to $24,706,841.28. Item Number 7, total general revenues from $79,906,193.96 to $79,707,320.17. Take a break. Now we're going to the appropriations. This is a little longer, but very familiar. You've heard, we've heard most of this before. Central Insurance Employee Group Health from $13,168,3174 to $12,916,062.95. Total operations, Items 8A, within caps from $56,084,309.55 to $55,839,547.6. Total operations, including contingent, with caps, this goes from $56,085,309.55 to $55,845,407.6. Detail, other expense, including contingent, from $25,516,337.67 to $25,271,568.88. Statutory expenditures, public employees retirement system from $1,001,4943 to $1,047,797.6. Police and fire retirement system for $4,376,544 to $4,578,568.29. Total deferred charges and statutory from $6,429,466 to $6,664,333.05. Total general appropriation for municipal purposes within caps from $62,514,775.55 to $62,504,873.81. Public and private programs offset by revenues. You drive, you text, you pay from $0 to $5,500. Partners from Health from $0 to $10,000. New Jersey Department Environmental Protection Clean Communities Program appropriated reserve from $78,776.36 to $90,053.54. Department of Solid Waste Administration... Department of Solid Waste Administration Recycling Tonnage Grant, from forty-two thousand five forty-nine fifty-three to zero. And, I apologize, I misread. That's from sixty, sixty thousand four forty-three eighteen to forty-eight thousand seven oh five. CTEC Grant, from forty-two thousand five forty-nine fifty-three to zero. Nacho Grant Appropriation Reserve from eighty-seven hundred to fourteen fifty. West Orange Municipal Line from fifty-nine eight to fifty-nine two oh two. Historic Preservation Debt from zero to fifteen thousand. Safer Grant Appropriation Reserve, from ten thousand four eleven forty-nine to zero. Hazardous Discharge Grant appropriated reserve from zero, I'm sorry, from nine cents to seventy-seven two thirty-eight. Anjac Grant from fifteen hundred to zero. Drunk Driving Enforcement Fund, from zero to eighteen thousand six sixty-seven twenty-eight. Clicker Ticket from zero to fifty-five hundred. Body Arm, Body Armor Replacement Fund, from thirteen thousand nine sixty-five seventy-three to eight, eight thousand two seventy-nine twenty-seven. Body Armor Replacement Fund Appropriation Reserve from eight thousand five eighty-two sixty-four to zero. Body worn cameras from thirty thousand to zero. Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Appropriation Reserve from nine thousand nine thirty-four fifty-six to zero. Bulletproof Vest Program Grant from seven thousand three oh three fifty-six to forty-four hundred. Total, public and private programs, offset by revenue, three hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one fourteen to three ninety-three seven ninety-nine oh nine. Total operations excluded from caps, five million six forty-one two twelve sixty to five million six fifty-three two forty fifty-five. Detail, salary and wage from sixty-nine thousand three fourteen forty-six to fifty-six thousand four thirty-two twenty-one. Other expenses, five fifty-one, five million five seventy-one, eight ninety-eight fourteen to five million five ninety-six eight oh eight thirty-four. New Jersey DOT Miscellaneous Streets from, from zero to two twenty-one, I'm sorry, zero, two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Payment of bond principal, four million one twenty to four million one forty. Total Municipal Debt Service, excluding caps, seven million four ninety four fifty-four eighty-two to seven million five ten four fifty-four eighty-two. Per, total, per, I'm sorry, purposes, excluding caps, total general appropriations excluded, fourteen million five oh four three sixty forty-two to fourteen million three fifteen three eighty-eight seventy-three. Subtotal general appropriation from seventy-seven million zero one nine one thirty-five ninety-seven to seventy-six eight twenty-two sixty-two eighteen. Total general appropriation, seventy-nine nine oh six one ninety-three ninety-six to seventy-nine million seven oh seven three twenty-seventeen. Total general appropriation for municipal purposes within caps, sixty-two million five fourteen seven seventy-five fifty-five to sixty-two five oh four eight seventy-three eighty-one. Operations excluded within caps, public and private offsets by, by revenues, total operation, I'm sorry, is three eighty-one seven seventy-one fourteen to three ninety-three seven eighty-nine oh nine. Total operations excluded from cap, five six, five million six forty-one two twelve sixty to five million six fifty-three two forty fifty-five. Capital improvements from seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. Municipal Debt Service, from seven million four ninety four fifty-four eighty-two to seven million five ten four fifty-four eighty-two. Total general appropriations, seventy-nine million nine oh six one ninety-three ninety-six to seventy-nine million seven oh seven three twenty-seventeen. I think I got it in under five.
I think you did good.
And I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Great. Does anyone have any questions on these changes?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, please, Councilwoman.
Um, the recycling tonnage grant that went down, what, what happened there?
With the grants, all the grants, there's, grants come in during the year. So in the first appropriate, in the first introduction, we always anticipate what we got the previous year. So, well, now we're ready to adopt. We haven't come in yet, so we have to make those adjustments if they haven't come in. So what will happen with the ones that went down, many of them, we will get in during the year, and then we will do a Chapter, uh, 158 resolution, and you'll, that puts them into the budget. So these aren't really reductions, they're only...
Just point in time.
Paper, yeah, right. They, they represent today's date. They don't represent the whole year.
Question from Mr. Searls. I, I assume, the drunk driving enforcement fund, is that a campaign that we're, we're going from zero to eighteen thousand six sixty-seven? Is that the same situation?
That's, that's, that's grant money that was, that we've, that we've received, and that offsets, that offsets our overtime.
Okay. I'll let someone else answer.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yeah, I think I, I found a line item. My question was about state aid, expected, and I think I found it in the budget.
It's the same, yes.
Yeah, it's there.
It's pretty balanced.
If we can limit, after this, we're going to have a hearing on the, the budget in its entirety. This discussion should be regarding just to this resolution.
Okay.
Councilman Green?
No, I'll wait to the...
I guess just to pick up where Jack, that we still have over a million dollars in grants pending, outstanding, waiting to hear. So, right, this is a point in time, and yet, it may change.
Yeah, we, we always increase as we go throughout the year. So what we end up is always more than we always start.
So we're proposing that our, our proposed surplus goes up ten thousand dollars?
Actually, we'll be, yeah, we'll be utilizing additional ten thousand dollars.
On the, on the body armor and cameras, is, does that represent any change in what we've been doing in the, in the various, do the various changes in the line items affect what we're doing with the cameras and with the body armor?
No, the, again, body armor is another one that we will, we always in October, we'll get awards for, for additional body armor. So that'll go into there. The, the cameras was a one-time grant last year, which we spent on thirty thousand dollars towards actually buying the, the body worn cameras. That, that is now going on and moving, that project is in effect now. This has, this has no impact on that.
So there was a, a two-hundred thousand dollar increase in the budget item for Police and Firemen's Retirement System?
Yes.
What happened there? Does it just reflect the addition?
First time in my career, my understanding, what we're told is, this is a byproduct of Chapter Seventy-Eight's adoption.
English, please.
We, we budgeted based on the amount of money that the state, the state comes up with our, their alloc, every municipality's allocation. And so we budgeted based on the allocation we were given when we got the bill recently. There's, there were additions to that. And we've, we've questioned that, and we're going to continue to question it. But basically, what they said was the change in the type of Chapter Seventy-Eight laws, that there were additional accruals that municipalities were going to get, above and beyond what's stated in the, their, their annual rates. So we're not sure if this means next year, we're not, you know, this pays us up to, you know, between the 2010 to now, and therefore, next year it'll go down, hopefully. Or whether or not, there's going to be additional, so we just don't know the answer to that. We're, we're still having ongoing conversations with them. Unfortunately, we have to pay it. You know, even if we figure out a way to get them to credit us back at some point in time, which we certainly will in the worst.
And, and I guess the other net effect is that appropriate, budget appropriations are going to go down roughly two-hundred thousand dollars from this amendment?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gross.
This, this resolution should be acted on prior to the budget hearing. This amendment does not require a budget hearing, but certainly, it can be discussed at the budget hearing as well. So the council, after the budget hearings this evening, can consider adoption of the entire budget.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 121-17, the resolution to amend the 2017 municipal budget?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kokoviac?
Yes. The resolution has passed. We move on now to Resolution 122-17. It's a, oh, we don't?
That's to adopt the budget, but you have to be here.
Right, well, that's what I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
But before we can discuss and vote on the resolution to adopt, we have a public meeting. Here's the procedure for our public hearing for the 2017 municipal budget. The meeting will come to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Garino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Kokoviac?
Present.
This is the time fix for the public hearing on the municipal budget and tax resolution for 2017. The budget was approved on first reading by the Township Council on April 25, 2017, was advertised as required on May 4, 2017, together with notice of hearing for this time. Copies were available to the public during the past week, and a supply is here for anyone desiring one this evening. You can come up and get it, if you like.
So before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. It's very similar to the procedure we use for public comment. Each person desiring to be heard will raise their hand and be recognized by the chair. And when you come to the lectern, please give your name and address before speaking for our minutes. I will recognize one speaker at a time, in order, as of rising as near as I can determine. Please address all questions to the chair. Where necessary, they will be referred to individual members of the governing body or to other municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget before us. School and county matters are not proper subjects of this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the municipal budget and tax resolution of 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kokoviac?
Yes. Could I see a show of hands of anyone who wishes to speak on the public hearing for the 2017 budget? Ms. Clemenson, please, come forward. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand.
Good evening. Maryelle Clemenson, Fort Cherrywood Circle in West Orange. I would kindly like to request the council to postpone adoption of the budget. And the reason is that some of us residents recently pulled together a committee to review the budget, and I'm sorry about it being late, but we are very energetic and very enthused about looking at it together as a group. We have a lot of, we have a few new members, and I was hoping one of them might, we might be able to introduce one of them tonight. But I also wanted a little more time to, to work with the town council people individually, to bring them up to speed on some of the discussions we've had over the last few weeks. One of the things, and I'm sure you'll agree with it, is we would love to be able to maintain our double A rating, which is fantastic. It's one of the highest ratings you can have for a municipality. We'd like to be able to look at various metrics and perhaps best practices regarding capital spending plans, looking at a surplus policy in order to maintain a double A rating, and looking at our debt policy going forward, and looking at perhaps a metric to be used, looking at it as a percentage of assessed values, and as it relates to the useful life of the underlying capital asset. So for those reasons, I'd like to have a little more time to be able to work with each of the town council members and introduce them to the residents who have just recently formed this committee. So I hope you approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemenson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands? Oh, much more fancy language. Observing no further applicants from the floor, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kokoviac?
Yes. So now it's time for us to discuss among ourselves about the budget and what we heard in public comment. Councilwoman Cirillo, you, I saw your hand first.
Yes, I think, Council President, um, we've been, I've been here since 2010, and we've gone through really rough times, really difficult times, where we had, we had to make decisions that scary, but we pulled through through a difficult economy. I'm glad to see that the budget's getting a little healthier, and we have a little bit more leeway. I just want to, well, I do want to commend the, the administration for staying within the cap, two percent cap. We're looking at sixty-five dollars a household, six, for, for the, for the next fiscal, no, for this calendar year, slash fiscal year. I do want to address, Council President, Ms. Clemenson's comments. I, I don't, we, I don't think we have urgency right now with respect to the double A rating. It sounds like, you know, we're in, in sound financial shape, the town is in good hands, we have some really good professionals at the helm, driving this, this, this budget and the town's finances. So I feel comfortable. I, I don't feel a sense of urgency. I do want to hear from the committee and, and work with the committee as we move forward, look at the surplus policies and debt policies, which, you know, there's no emergency. We don't need to get them done like now. You know, if, if I were like a different municipality and the, and the verge of bankruptcy, I would be a little bit more lenient towards stopping the process at this point. But, but yeah, we can look at metrics, we can look at a surplus policy and debt policy, which I think it's important. We have a very conservative group up here. We, within the, within a healthy percentage of what the town expects, but it doesn't mean that, we're not going to be around forever, but it doesn't mean that we can leave policies behind so that the, the next group that comes after us, you know, operates or makes decisions within the same parameters. So I, I really appreciate the willingness of the, of some of our residents to get involved with the process, help, help us out. But at this point, I don't see an urgency, Council President, those are just my, that's just my perspective and my perception at this point. So I, I, again, I want to commend Maryelle. She's, she's been coming up every year, and every year she, she gives us sound advice, and we listen, and that, debt policy, and we're always looking at that ratio. I, I thank you for that, and I thank you for going out there and recruiting some folks that can also help us, help us look at, at, at all the, all the dots in the same manner. Sure, I appreciate it. Thank you, Council President, for that time.
Sure. Councilwoman Castellino, I think you had your hand up first, or?
No, no.
No, okay, I'm sorry, Councilman Green.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. To my colleagues, I first want to thank the administration for a great job on putting the budget together and formulating it and putting it together. To Maryelle, Ms. Clemenson, you know, from my day one, when I was elected to the council, I met you, and we had been, many, many conversations. I look forward to working with the, you know, the board, and working with your committee, because it's good to share ideas. Everybody has something positive to give, you know, as long as they give, as long as it always stays on a positive note and not a, you know, a political note or anything else. As long as it stays positive, it's great. My concern's always been is the capital expenditures. We've let our equipment go, and we need to put our equipment, particularly our police and fire apparatus, on par to where it should be. I mean, you know, last year, we were able to buy a new ladder truck, because the prior ladder truck was older than all of us put together, and I wouldn't ride on it myself. Now we have to go forward and buy a new engine, which, because we don't have, you know, backup equipment, and with the type of terrain that West Orange has, we need to have our equipment on the call, on the ready, 24/7. And we need to put into our capital, so I'll always fight for capital expenditures. But, you know, we also have to look at other things, debt policy, the whole thing. So, you know, we appreciate, you know, and like I said, Maryelle, I've known you since day one and before, you're always here. You come to every budget meeting on the Saturdays, you sit through the whole thing, and so I respect your knowledge and your dedication to that and everything else. But at this point in time, I don't see us putting off the, the budget adoption. I think we're in good financial shape. I think we'll maintain our, our rating, which is very important, as I agree with you, you know, maintaining a good financial rating is extremely important, especially when it comes to borrowing money. So, but, but thank you for your input, at least, you know, you don't just, you've always come to meetings and you participate, so I respect you for that. But at this point in time, I have to say, we, we need to move forward with the budget. But we still have a, a year to go ahead for, you know, for next time, and I hope you get the group together, and I'd like to see it be a positive, you know, activity. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Sure. Anyone else?
Sure.
Councilwoman.
So, Maryelle, I, you know how much I appreciate your input and budgets as well. You've been my appointment to the, this advisory committee now for a number of years. I'm not ready to delay this, because conversations we've had, you already know that there's really... no wiggle room in this budget right now. It is so slim, except for looking at a long-term plan. We always look for that, that five-year plan. We did that, suggested a three-year plan for the library. They gave us a five-year plan. So, I mean, that we can put in place. But just, I do agree with my colleagues about our assessments and our budget. But in 2009, we have a resolution that established the Budget Advisory Committee, and, you know, this, as much as I know that many members that are here sat through our budget hearing, we haven't heard from anyone except you and I conversation. So I don't know that there's really any comments or anything left to add, but the Budget Advisory Committee is a little more official, established through resolution, not through an ad hoc committee, though we do appreciate your interest in this. It says the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee will be charged with reviewing the township's budgets, which you have been doing, its services, programs, and expenditures, compiling the committee's collective analysis, input, and suggestions, and presenting them to the Township Council, which is what you want to do. But it says that the Township Council, the committee, advisory committee, the committee shall be comprised of seven members, two appointed by the mayor, one of which will be the chairperson, one of each will be five members, one and one by, appointed each by five members of the Township Council. Chairman of each committee member will be one year, ending on September 30th of each year. So it's a little more official than asking us to hold up the budget so that citizens can review it. Though we do appreciate the time and effort that you would put into this, you know that you can always contact us at any time with any recommendations or suggestions. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Yeah. Maryelle, thank you for coming down. And it's my second budget, budget with the municipality this past March. It's a long day on Saturday, and you spend the time, and I really appreciate that. And for those of you that are interested in spending the time, and I know Susan, you were here that day, and Rosary, you were here that day, we do appreciate it. And as you could see from the time that we spent with the directors, I mean, that's, for me, that really is really, you know, what I, is the most beneficial part for me to see, and I hope it was for you, to really get an understanding of each department works. You heard the kind of questions that we ask. We spent a whole lot of time with them and really get an understanding of their needs, because they have the feet on the ground, and we really have to understand how each department works and what their needs are year to year. With planning, I think we've done a better job this year with holding the administration with some strategic, strategic planning with regard to the firehouses, making sure we have a plan. They have a whole committee with our fire department, with our, with our firefighters, working on approving those facilities. I know the police department, they had many items this year, and vehicles they were in need of as well. And I know that their union heads have been very instrumental in getting them, the information to us that we need to make those kind of decisions. We have access, and, and so as far as your committee, I think it's great that you come that day in March, you get a better understanding. But to Councilwoman McCartney's point too, you know, until today, we haven't heard anything since March. And we even had some, even though it's not a forum to, for the public to have conversation, there was a few minutes downtime where we got to have a snack, and, and you did get to ask a few questions, which I think is great. Mr. Gross and Mr. Searsh are always wonderful and accommodating to, to the public when they come. And I, I think it's great that you, you meet and you, you know, you have access. I know Mr. Gross has been very accommodating with, with questions with the public. But as far as pushing this back, I think we're beyond that. I would have liked to heard some input before today, and I apologize if we didn't get that, that out there, but we do have public comment every week. So at any given point, and you have, you've taken advantage of that, which I think is great. Also, too, if you're looking for other added suggestions for us, you know, around October is a good time you should. If you have anything that, you know, you may think residents may be looking for suggestions, because the way the, the process presents itself is when the directors start working with the administration to start that process in regards to planning for, for what's going to go in the budget after the New Year. So thank you for coming down. I appreciate it. But I, at this point in time, I think we're beyond that point. So maybe next year, get to us a little bit sooner with added suggestions. But we do appreciate them. So thank you. Council President.
Thank you. First of all, I want to, just want to say thank you to the, the people out there who have come together for, to form the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, even though you don't have appointments from, from the council, and even though, you know, the mayor hasn't appointed his two appointees. I really appreciate Councilwoman McCartney pulling out the, the resolution, because I've, I would love to see that and just have it going forward. Thank you. Thank you. But I think it's extremely valuable to have another set of eyes to take a look at, at the budget. And so I appreciate what you've done, and I encourage you to continue on regardless of what the council decides tonight. I know you, Ms. Clemmenson, you've been working on the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee for at least the seven years that I've been on the council, and the membership and the activity of, of the committee has waxed and waned in that time. And I appreciate your perseverance and your ability to pull together a group of people that want to do this. And there shouldn't be anything that stops you from continuing to do that. As Councilwoman Castellino said, you can come to the council anytime, council meeting anytime to, to advise us. And also, you know, you're reachable by, by email. I just want to take a, a quick look at some of the numbers in the budget, and just to explain, I guess, my, my perspective on the budget. Our budget is now over $79 million worth of spending, and that's a number that has been creeping up over the last few years. And in addition to that, we are, in this proposed budget, would be raising property taxes, the maximum allowed under the state's cap law, which is 2%. And that's to cover the levy, which is the total dollar amount of the taxes raised to fund the budget. And as of the last time we heard about the tax base, it was projected to decline slightly this year for, I guess, maybe the seventh, eighth year in a row, but by the least amount I think that it's ever declined. So that's, that's all good news. But the, the potential effect of that is that your, the tax rate to fund the budget is actually going to go up a little bit more than 2%. So given that, what I consider to be a significant increase, I would like to try to work with the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee and anybody else to see if we can, we can whittle that down. One of the aspects of the budget that, that troubles me is that we are building in a significant increase in the surplus, and the surplus being the money that we raise that we are projected not to spend and to have for a future budget. And I, I know the administration really likes their surplus, and I, I like it too, but not at the expense of maximizing the taxes that we're imposing on, on property holders. So what we're doing right now this year is that we're raising appropriations, about 1.3 million, but we're only, we're only finding another $233,000 of revenue to offset that. So our taxes are actually going up almost $1.1 million, about $1.08 million. And what I wanted to just ask a few questions about a certain portion of the budget, if I could at this point, because there's some real significant increases in revenue and some line items in this budget. I also just wanted to follow up about the comment about the budget about coming to the March hearing and then not providing any input. As, as we all know, there are actually two budgets that are presented. We have the line item budget in March for our statutory hearing where we go line by line, and it takes us a whole day. And then we get a second version of the budget that also includes not just the expenditures in March, but also the revenues. And it's a different document. And so you actually have two different budgets to consider. They're, they're similar in some ways, but they're different in, in others. So it's, it's not as if you had a, you've only had, I guess, about a month, just as we have, when the budget was introduced, just in your defense. But getting back to some of the line items, Mr. Gross, in the introduced budget, it, it mentions that, or it states that the municipal court, the revenues from the municipal court are projected to go up of almost 27% or almost $133,500. That seems like a significant increase. Is there some reason for your optimism? This is in, on page number four PDF, page eight. God bless you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I should have, as if you don't have this committed to memory.
Yes, exactly.
He does, though, look, he's already on.
Well, I could tell you. I just wanted to look at it, too. The reason that I'm optimistic about raising that again in this year is that, that is the amount that we raised last year. So if our operation continue as currently, as they did in 2016, then we will hit that number. Frankly, we've, in many areas of this budget, when we, we have anticipated based on the previous year, and that's been something we've done, and we've encouraged, or encouraged, we are encouraged that many years, we continue to exceed those numbers. So it's reasonable, I think it's reasonable to anticipate that we will reach that, and that's my basis for it. I mean, certainly, it's certainly not unrealistic, because it is the number that we hit in 2016.
So, so it looks like our, our revenue from the court system, if you look at it over a two-year period, it's gone from roughly $400,000 in 2015 to $500,000 in 2016, and then it's going to go up another $133,000 this year?
Well, it did last year.
Right.
It's not that I'm, not that I'm anticipating it going up
Right.
More this year from last year. That is the amount that was last year.
So maybe
And when it was 400, the reason we went to 500 is because it went up to 500 the previous year. So those are, those are the increases that we've been seeing. Those are the activity that we've been seeing.
That's amazing. We should figure out how we're doing that and sell it to the other 457 municipalities in the state. This is amazing. How, I mean, that's significant income in a, in a budget where we get very, we seldom get more than single-digit increases.
Yeah, we have the same thing in construction. You know, construction is going up, it's similarly as well.
Licenses.
So, I mean, you know, it is active, you know, you know, part of it is, I'm not, I'm not attributed to the court, but, you know, the economy's changing, you know, the dynamics are changing.
Okay.
And things are getting better. So.
And the same thing on a line item that I'm not familiar with. Interest and cost on taxes is projected to rise almost 59% or almost $360,000 to 973, almost $974,000. What, what is that?
Based on our, our activity in the previous year?
I'm sorry. What is, what is the definition of that line?
Oh, what is that? That is interest and cost on taxes. That's penalties that we get from taxpayers who pay late, or an interest that, who pay, taxpayers that pay late when we sell our tax liens. At some point in time, we get some revenue from that, goes into that, so.
Well, prison is no longer delinquent.
Yeah, exactly.
So we're losing that revenue.
You got that joke.
That was a lot of revenue.
My, my main argument tonight is that I don't think we should adopt the budget, because that, that, tonight, because it stops the process for doing this. And one of, one of my concerns, I've mentioned that we've got what I consider to be a big tax increase. We should look at ways that we can, we can cut that down. But as you can hear, our revenues are going up, but so is our spending. And so my feeling is that we should look to see if, since revenues are going up, maybe we can reduce spending in a few areas and reduce the amount of the tax increase.
We sat there all day in March and went over it line by line by line. We didn't come up with anything that day. What are we going to come up now in the 12th hour?
I'm sorry, if I could just continue.
Sorry.
Thank you. And again, one of the things, we're, we're projecting to raise our, our surplus, almost $125,000. We can certainly not increase the surplus. We could keep it to the same level that it was last year, when we had significant surplus, and reduce the tax, the tax rate, the tax levy that we need in the tax rate.
That would not. If you reduced it right now without, without, if you reduced the surplus, that would increase the amount of taxes. If you reduce it as a revenue, that would cause the tax amount to raise by taxation to go up.
Yes.
I mean, if you.
Wait, if we, if we, if we raise less, less, smaller tax levy?
No, 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 you, you won't. If you reduce the amount of, of surplus that you're anticipating in this budget, that reduces a revenue. That will, every revenue that goes down has to result in an increase in taxes. If you raise your revenue, that results in a decrease in taxes. So the, the changing at this point in time, if you wanted, if you, if you felt strongly about reducing the, the surplus by $124,000, back to what it was in the previous year, you would have to find $124,000 in cuts, and you'd still be right where you are with taxes now.
Why would we just reduce the surplus back to what we, we had last year?
Surplus is a revenue.
I understand that. And so is, and so are taxes.
That's right. So if one goes up, one goes down. One goes down, one goes up. If you, if you have less revenue, you have no other choice but to raise taxes.
Unless you reduce spending.
Unless you reduce spending.
Right.
So, so.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm advocating is.
But, but you're, but you're, what you're saying was, and I just want, I'm not disputing that you could make cuts and reduce taxes if that's what you chose to do. But the argument about reducing the surplus only aggravates that, because you would have to reduce, you would have to reduce the appropriations, an additional $124,000 above whatever you were anticipating lowering the taxes. So if you wanted, let's say you wanted to lower taxes $200,000, you picked a number. If you also, if you also reduce the amount of surplus that you're anticipating in the budget, you would have to find $324,000 in cuts in order to accomplish that. So it's just two different things. Again, council wants to delay adopting the budget, that's a choice it can make. I wouldn't recommend it for, there's reasons for that. But you, the objectives that you're looking at are, would multiply some of the challenges, I think, that, that you're, that you're describing.
Yeah. I just think with our growing revenues, that we should look at perhaps taking less of the revenues from the taxpayers. That's really my, my bottom line. But it brings me to my next question, which is, what are the reasons why it's important, from your perspective, to adopt the budget now, given that I think this is the earliest we've ever proposed to adopt a budget, at least since I've been on the, on the government?
Actually, it's, we, we, actually, earlier, this is, it's three days earlier than last year, but we've, we've adopted at the end of April and the beginning of May, since I've been here. And that was a change in, we've done things. However, if you, if you delayed at this point, number one, we'd be out of compliance. I'm not so worried about that. But you'd be out of compliance, because the statutes do say that you have a certain timeframe under which to, to do this. But I think the, the most dramatic part is, is if you delay it past this evening, we will not be in a position to send out tax bills for, in, in June or July for the third and the fourth quarter, which means we will have to do estimated taxes for that, which we've done it before in the past, and incur an additional cost of mailing a second, the actual second tax bill. So that, that is certainly significant. The other part of that is, is if you delay it beyond that, we will not get a tax rate. There will be a certain amount of uncertainty with taxpayers, you know, and the angst that comes along with that.
Yes, and, and we would have to balance that against the angst that they might feel from getting the full 2% if we could cut that down by, you know, any basis point.
Well, yes, if we could have cut that down, why didn't we do that in the budget hearing? Why didn't anybody vote against items in the budget hearing? Because
Because let me explain something to you.
You're talking about back in March?
Yes, back in March. The increases here are not... They're uncontrolled increases. It's not like we spent money on cars and other things. All the increases that we have in this budget are personnel costs, our costs from the police and fire, retirement systems. They're all costs that are out of our control. The costs that are in our control, actually, some of those costs were reduced as I'm going through these items. Central Automotive, we've reduced. We've reduced a lot of line items in this budget. This went up because of uncontrolled costs, not because we're spending money frivolously. So you need to understand that. I just want to make that clear. And we made that pretty clear during the budget hearing. Those are costs that we have no control over, and they're going up. So we could review this budget all we want. The only way you're going to reduce... I'll tell you what. There's only one way that you're going to reduce money in this budget, and that's lay off bodies. And if you do that, you're going to reduce services to the township. That's the only way you're going to reduce money in this budget. Because every one of the increases that we have in this budget are uncontrolled costs that we have no control over. And we discussed that during the budget hearing. I just want to make that clear. So it's your decision to make, but it's my opinion we adopt this budget.
I'm sorry. Are you saying that the $79 million budget is totally uncontrollable, that we can't reduce it?
I didn't say that. I said the cost...
That's why I'm asking. I'm not trying to pick a fight. I just want to clarify.
The increases in this budget are uncontrolled costs unless you lay off employees. That's what I'm saying. There are salary and wage costs that are contractual, which we discussed during the budget hearing. There are pension costs that we have no control over, that the state controls. We've even reduced our medical costs. We've reduced costs that we're spending on, like I said, our central automotive and other costs. The costs that we have at our disposal to deal with are reduced. The increases in this budget are all costs that are uncontrolled by us, is what I'm saying. There are certain costs that we have to pay the state and certain costs that we have to pay contractually that we have no control over until the new contract comes out, which is the end of this year. We renegotiate all our contracts at the end of this year. And even though that increased our budget, there were still only 1% and 2% increases in those wages, salary and wages. Because two of the years, we had zeros. It was 0022, I believe it was. So now we're in the last two years where we're paying the 2%. Unfortunately, you got to pay that, you know? You can't have the zero... You can't expect them to give you four zeros four years in a row. It doesn't happen like that. But, you know, we've even been... We've even done well with negotiating our salary and wages with our employees. But I'm telling you, the only way, if you want to reduce the 2% in this budget, you got to lay off bodies. It's that simple.
Councilman?
Well, Council President, that's exactly what we talked about during the budget hearing. And if you recall, we did go line by line for every part of that budget summary. And with all due respect, I think for you to make that statement now is a contradiction because on every one of those pages, if I recall, it was five to zero to approve each one of those pages at that time. I think there was one abstention. So I think that would be a contradiction now to say that we need to go back and review it or have other people review it.
Well, it may be...
We did talk about layoffs. Well, we did talk about layoffs, and the directors sat right here and gave us their wish list as they do every year. They advocate for their employees every year. And we didn't, except for the contract negotiations, I mean, the contract obligations, there were really virtually no increases at all. So I'm just saying, I think it's a contradiction if you go back now and say, now you don't approve, even though we approved each page.
See, I don't see it as a contradiction because when we did the statutory hearing in March, all we had was the expenditures. What we didn't have was against the revenues and also the tax increase. So when we're looking...
Just to clarify, Councilman, you did not have a breakdown of all the revenues. That's absolutely correct. But there were... The revenues were or are in the document that we reviewed and that we brought to the council with... By category, by broad category. But we did not have... So we showed where the funds were going to come from, miscellaneous income, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But no, you're right. We did not have the breakdown of it.
And if you're going to reduce the budget, you got to reduce the appropriations, not the revenues. So it wouldn't matter.
Well, you have to do both. You have to do both.
Now, you have to reduce revenues.
No, you have to raise revenues.
You have to raise revenues. If you want to reduce the budget, you have to reduce appropriations. You don't reduce your revenues. Why would you do that?
Well, if you have... Let's just say you have $100 of revenues and $100 of appropriations or expenditures.
Right.
If you reduce your appropriations from 100 to 98...
Reduce the budget by $2.
Right.
You could reduce taxes. You could reduce some revenue. You could pick the revenue that you reduce, the revenue that you reduce, you know?
But if you...
But my point is that if you wanted to reduce the budget, the appropriations is where you want to do that. And then, you're right, then it goes out into whether you have the revenues or you don't have the revenues. But if you didn't reduce the appropriations, how are you going to reduce anything out of the budget? And like I said, those appropriations are all uncontrolled costs. So the only way to reduce those... The only way to reduce salary and wages, pension and benefits, healthcare costs is to lay off employees because that's where the money goes. That's the only way to reduce those costs. I can't call the state and say, you, as John talked about tonight, you increased our police and fire pension cost by $250,000. We're not paying it. Guess what? We have to pay it. We're municipal government. That's how it works. PERS calls us and says, hey, we're increasing your PERS payments by almost $800,000. We're not paying it. You got to pay it. You don't have a choice. So that's what I... When I talk about uncontrolled costs, that's what those costs are. And the only way you can rid yourself of those costs, or reduce those costs, I should say, is to lay off employees because that's where it goes.
And of course, and you all know this, but the decision is a lot harder than even that, than laying off employees, because it's which employees and which programs are you going to reduce your services to. So it becomes, you know, when you look through the services that you provide to residents, either all residents or segments of the residents, which of those services that you feel are priorities versus the other? And that'll drive, you know, which employees? And that'll drive... Which employees drives what the cost savings would be for that? So it's... I want to say it's involved. You all know this. You've been through it, or some... Most of you have. It's a very difficult set of decisions that, you know, I guess, you know, my understanding from the budget hearing, that the council did consider those and made a decision as to the directions they wanted to go for this year.
Council President, we did... I say, going into our budget, it was a collective agreement that we were not going into the budget to lay off people. I do recall that. We did talk about the vacancies in different departments. They were eliminated. A few filled, but our intent was not to lay off any employees.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I feel very good moving forward today, mainly because of the time spent on that Saturday, the question asked, the... And even past that Saturday, you know, I don't know about, you know, my colleagues, but I know I, you know, made phone calls to directors to follow up on some questions that I asked, constantly, you know, keeping in contact with administration. So, you know, I don't want folks to think we just ended work that day. I know for me, it did not work. It did not end because, you know, I had constant questions and follow-up answers to receive, which I did, so I feel comfortable. I'd also like to make a point, too, and as a suggestion for next year. And I think we need to do a better job, especially for ourselves, when we get to this point of the process and we're facing a group of individuals. I think we need to do a better job of highlighting what is actually in the budget in regards to, you know, we have expanded jitney service this year. We're making vast improvements over at Jenny Dunkle Pool, some of our recreation facilities, infrastructure within, you know, within our buildings. And these are great positive improvements for the community at whole. And I think we need to do a better job highlighting it. So we, you know, yes, we have an increase of $65 a year, which, of course, it's always great not to have any increase, but I think folks need to know what that increase... What comes with that increase. And, you know, we have expanded services. We... You know, I heard from all our directors, you know, they're doing the best they could with limited resources they have. As we've been having retirements through the years, we haven't been replacing individuals. And where has that left us? You know, residents crying out for more services, and we're trying to accommodate that. That's why we hired the grant writer last year. And revenues are up, which is a great thing. And we saw that increase, the grants increase from the grant writer. So we are doing those things, and we are working it. But I really feel, at this point in time, I feel comfortable moving forward tonight because, you know, that work has been done. And we do need a surplus. Going back to, I believe, Council President, you came to me, the League of Municipalities... I'm losing my voice. Also, we just got certified at Rutgers, continuing education for elective officials. And, you know, they make the recommendation, you know, you have to keep a surplus. You can't not eat into your surplus. I believe their recommendation was to have 18% of your budget in reserves, and we're well under that. I know you're looking... I laughed, too, when they threw out that number at not only one, at two different courses I attended and at Ask Question. So, you know, we... Again, I feel comfortable moving forward. I hear you. It's always great if we could reduce, but we're also expanding. I think we need to do a better job of highlighting, you know, what comes along with this budget. And I'd like to see that done for next year, if we could.
Yeah, I totally agree with you about a much more expanded narrative, maybe with some charts, just to sort of track that sort of thing. I totally agree with you because it would be very helpful, not only to us, but to the residents.
Excuse me, one more comment.
Certainly.
You know, if you ever... And that's part of, you know, what I brought to the table, working when I was on the school board. If you ever sat through the school board presentation, you could see it online, you know, Bob Siggy, you know, Mr. Stares will probably want to hit me over the head right now, but we had him after taking pictures of all, you know, capital improvements. And not only what was done, you know, what we were looking to do, but what also was accomplished from the prior budget. So again, it's just communicating, getting the word out there to the public to give them a better understanding. But I'm done. Thank you. I feel confident moving forward tonight.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. I tend to agree with what Michelle is saying also about having a budget summary or narrative on it. I think it's a great idea. I think what we tend to do is that when we see a bond ordinance, we highlight what's happening in that. And if it's not the fire department or street paving, or I remember actually saying it was music to my ears when I heard the street sweeper going by because I hadn't heard it in so long. So I think we do it in, you know, in a different way of highlighting what it is that these tax dollars are being spent on, but it would be nice to see a summary. Jackie, I remember you made a pie chart a few years back on, just to explain the whole process.
It's, you know, municipal government spending is very different than what most people think it is. And like I said, some of the...
Salary and wages.
A lot of the costs that are put on us, we don't really have much choice. You know, we try to keep our services as lean as we can, and we do as best as we can to, you know, hire the right people and hire the right companies. But, you know, sometimes that gets out of line, too, you know? Especially when you're doing streets because you open up a street and you find out there's a bigger problem, and you got to come up with another $100,000. And that's another reason why you need the reserves. And, you know, it... The biggest thing with, to me, with having the reserves is what everybody's talked about tonight, and that's keeping our rating up. Because if you drop your reserves, that's the first thing that you look at, and your ratings drop. Once your rating drops, and everything you got to do when you're bonding is going up. So it's six of one half and does the other. You save $1,000 a year, you lose $1,000 on the other end. So it's just a... Unfortunately, it's a system that is tough to deal with.
And I will say, just to add to that, I mean, we've been very protective of our fund balance over... Since I've been here. And we've been able to maintain our double A rating over the past two years as well with the bonds, actual bond sales. We've gotten very, you know, very strong ratings with the AA, the double A rating. And it's... Every time we talk to them, it's the first question they want to know is, what's your plan for fund balance? What is your surplus plan? And we do have a written surplus plan. We've spoke about this here many times. We don't anticipate any more in a budget than we raised in the previous year. And that's how we make sure that we continue to maintain a good, solid fund balance and a good, solid bond rating. Because if our bond rating goes up, if you think you have high debt service now, you know, the bond rating goes up, it'll really be a problem. We've been able to maintain it while the state and many municipalities, state in particular, I think, was 20, 20 reductions or some outrageous number. I'm probably being... Using hyperbole, but certainly double digits in terms of the number of rating reductions since I've been here. And we've been able to maintain that, and that's, I think, that's pretty significant.
And just to clarify, I'm not suggesting that we reduce our surplus, our projected surplus. I'm simply saying, maybe this is the year that we don't increase it by $124,000. But you mentioned the debt service, and that's one of the things that's really eating up our budget, I think.
And we've taken steps to reduce our debt service. I mean, we're seeing an upward trend in it, but far less than what was previously negotiated with previous bond sales by doing refinancing and doing it in a timely manner so that to the extent that there are costs going up, that the taxpayers get hit on an even basis as opposed to a very choppy basis, which is also bad for your tax rate.
Councilman Cirillo? I'm sorry, I saw his hand first.
I'm just making a list of all the items that we can spend money on if we want to increase the money. My point is, it's a balance, right? It's a balance between what we can generate by revenue, taxation, $53 million, and then how we're going to spend that money. We're cutting the planning department down, seven, almost $70,000. Roads need to be paved. They get calls. One is my road being paved. Parks need to be rehapped. We get calls. This park needs to be rehabbed. Additional police protection. All of these certain neighborhoods, they need additional protection.
Sidewalks.
Firehouses, they need rehab. We get that all the time. Side walk... Walk paths. I want to say about walk paths, the light signal in the roads.
Right.
Maybe. Municipal parking needs to be improved. Get my point? It's a balance. And I think we've found a sound balance, and I think we should move forward and proceed going around in circles. If not, let's start looking at some of these other items.
Council President? Thank you. And to my colleague, to Councilwoman Castellanos' point, too, is, you know, visuals are very good, and people love to see visuals. And to justify the fact that it is your capital expenditures, you know, replacement, when you show people, you know, what the cost is of not replacing, not spending, say, $500,000 for an engine truck, but what it costs to maintain what we currently have, it justifies the expenditures. And just to say what Michelle said, it's good if we see those type of, you know, charts and graphs. I remember about two, three years ago, when the administration went around to different areas showing the public, you know, the budget numbers on graphs and charts and slide presentations. So it's a good way to justify the number. I mean, I'm very comfortable with this budget, I'm very comfortable with the capital project because it's, it's providing the services to protect our employees, to protect our police and fire, to, you know, improve our facilities for their benefit, and, and also, it's just like I said, down the road, spending the money now in your capital prevents you from spending more later on or during the course of the year. So that's what I'd like to continue to see, but I'd like to see a little more justification with the budget numbers, saying, if I didn't spend this on something new, this is what's going to cost me with something old. And that's it. So thank you, Council President.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I forgot the jitney, and I forgot senior citizen services that we can spend more money on as well. So, try, let's try to do the best that we can, $65 a household, but an average assessment of how much? $65.
$375.
$375.
So, the house is worth $375,000, and municipal budget is going up $65. Sixty, on average, 69, I guess. Thank you, Council President.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 122-17, Resolution to adopt the 2017 municipal budget?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kokovia?
No. Resolution passes. The budget is adopted.
Ordinances on first reading, 2510-17, and ordinance amending Chapter 9 to include Section 3 regarding mandatory direct deposit. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kokovia?
Yes. Do any of my colleagues wish to have a discussion on this ordinance?
I wanted to make a comment, again, to, actually to, goes hand in hand, or it's a nice segue to the discussion we just had about the budget, because this resolution, I mean, this ordinance that we're looking at for first reading is to have a mandatory direct deposit, and during the contract negotiations, Jackie really took, commended on the contract negotiations, negotiations, and I guess it was a few years back where, John, you, you had been advocating for a bi-monthly payroll distribution. I know there was a lot of pushback with that, and we ended up doing it, we are saving money in that, and now if we're looking at this ordinance on a mandatory direct deposit, it's going to be that much more that we could save.
Hand paper.
Right, exactly, right. So, again, you know, things that we don't see, it could be included to the budget narrative, but this is another example of trying to save money along the way, so.
Sustainable.
Sustainable.
I love that word.
You like that word, don't you, Susan? Sustainable?
It's my middle name.
Councilwoman.
I just want to add to my colleague's point, which she, she made a very good point, and Mr. Gross, I got to commend you this year, you have a lot of efficiencies in the business office with a lot of software programs and whatnot you brought in, and, again, you know, it's, it's a great, another, list all those items on a highlight sheet, which would help articulate to the public what we've been doing here this, this past year, so kudos to you, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Council President. And Mr. Gross, I want to say too, between all the adjustments you've made, all the new systems that you've brought in, particularly Kronos and all that, it's basically going in the direction of controlling our payroll expenses and justifying, so it's a good call out, and I'd like to see more things like this, that saves us, particularly when it comes to payroll expenses.
Anyone else? Just a quick question on the next ordinance that was pulled, 2511-17. Any reason why it was proposed and pulled?
Which one was that?
Traffic. It was pulled from the agenda.
Which one was that?
I think that's the municipal ID card.
Oh, yeah, the municipal ID.
Oh, yeah, we had some other questions that were, that we wanted to look at, so we didn't want to put it on the agenda until we got the answers to those questions, so we're proud to be on next agenda.
Okay.
We just didn't get the answers by the end of the day, unfortunately.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
2512-17, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic, subsection 7-20, Stop Intersection of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kokovia?
Yes. Any discussion?
Just as one that occasionally travels down that, that steep slope, it is a good spot, good call to put a stop sign there.
Madam Clerk?
2513-17, an ordinance creating a reclassification in salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide, and establishing employee status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kokovia?
Yes. Any discussion?
We had done our first reading. Oh, I'm sorry. Title changes.
It's getting too late.
Yeah.
That's all of the.
Similar.
Ordinances on, proposed ordinances on first reading, we have none on second reading. Next section of the agenda is pending matters, new matters, council discussion. Are there any issues?
The jitney was the issue.
Yeah.
There was a, there was a discussion of, of a proposal, a rough proposal for Ashland Avenue, that I missed the meeting. I don't know whether we need to discuss that now.
Okay, okay.
Then I think we have reached the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we need to go into ABC for one resolution.
Can we get this straight? Do I, do I adjourn this meeting and then go into? Okay.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned. Our next council meeting is June 13th, and hope to see you either in council chambers or on video. Thanks very much, good night.